01, so I will call the April meeting of the Simsbury Zoning Board of Appeals to order. I'll note that we are actually on SCTV tonight, so they are taping us, just so that everybody's aware. Turning to the agenda, the second item is appointment of alternates. I'll appoint Paul Cachi for Carol Bingham. Carol has resigned from our board. She's moved out of town. And I'll appoint Joanne Hogan for Teagan Blackburn. And then the third items are public hearings. And let me get a copy of the notice, and Secretary, if you can have you read that.
Yes.
Okay. I can't. I just went to the eye doctor. My eyes are not so good.
Good evening. Legal notice, Town of Simsbury Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting. The zoning board of appeals of the Town of Simsbury will hold a public hearing at a regular meeting on Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room of the Simsbury Town Offices, 933 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, on the following. Number one, application number 15-01 of David Richmond, Agent HOP760 LLC owner, to appeal a decision of the zoning official regarding the property located at 760 Hot Meadow Street, map G10, block 104, lot 002, zones SC-1 and SC-2. And then number two, application number 15-02 of Timothy G. Martin owner, to appeal a decision of the zoning official regarding the property located at Lark Road, assessor's map D03, block 208, lot 003A, zone R40. At this hearing, interested persons may appear and be heard on the issues and written communications will be received. A copy of the above is on file in the office of the Town Park, 933 Hot Meadow Street, Simsbury, Connecticut, for public inspection. Greg Kessu, Chairman, Simsbury Zoning Board of Appeals, dated the 6th day of April 2015 at Simsbury, Connecticut.
Great. Thank you, Katie, for reading that. That was published in the Hartford Current. The first item on the agenda is application 15-01 of David Richmond. For the record, we did receive a letter dated April 22nd from Attorney Charles Houlihan. I'll just read it into the record. It's short. Dear Hyrum, reference matter is scheduled for a public hearing on April 22nd. On behalf of the applicant, I write to request that the hearing be passed over to the next meeting of the Simsbury ZBA. Thank you for your assistance. If we need to be present, please let me know at once. So with that, we are not going to be withdrawing this application. We're simply going to be continuing it. I guess the question is, do we open the public hearing and continue so that we don't have to publish again? Or should we just continue without opening the public hearing?
You can open it or you can postpone.
Okay.
I'd say open and continue. In that way, we'll continue to the next hearing, which would be one month from now.
Okay. That save a publication, maybe. Bob, any thoughts on that? Is that fine?
That's fine.
Okay.
If you don't open it, though, you have 60, you're within your 65-day window. If you open it, you're in a 35-day window.
Okay.
But either way, it'll be resolved by your next meeting.
So then for timeline, why don't we not open the public hearing and just move to keep this matter open and continue it without moving to public hearing? Does that make sense?
Sure.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Oh, second.
Motion and second on your discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
When you oppose, motion carries. Second application is 15-02 of Mr. Martin. Thanks, Brad.
Came for the main event.
So we will open that public hearing. That public hearing is open. Just for the record, just want to sort of go through how we're going to handle this public hearing. We are first going to hear from the applicant, as we always do. We always hear the applicant first. And then after that, we will have an opportunity for staff to comment, in particular, from our CEO. We will then take questions from commissioners. Because it's a public hearing, we are also going to have the opportunity for a public audience. We have some letters that we'll read into the record, and anybody that's here can identify themselves and speak from the podium as well. The applicant will have the last word before we close the public hearing. The only other thing that I would ask is that all comments, questions, anything like be directed towards the board to the chair, not by in-between members of the public or the applicant and staff. And with that, Mr. Martin, if you could just identify yourself for the record, and we will give the floor to you, sir.
Do you need this?
Please.
You can give it to Rachel right here. Thanks.
Hey, for the record, I'm Tim Martin. I'm the applicant. My address is Nine Dogwood Lane, Simsbury, Connecticut, 0607. I'm applying, this is really a matter of, in my opinion, it's an evidentiary hearing. It's narrowly. I'll give you a background on the case. Basically, my corporation owns Nine Dogwood Lane. That's where I reside. Nine Dogwood Lane is composed of about four and a half acres. Before I bought it, I spoke to Mr. Beach about a possible free cut, first cut, as it's, you know, pre-zoning part of the land. He gave me what he would require to do it in the letter that they date. They show, I think it's a type of September 23, 2100. I think that's September 23, 2011, is what they meant to put. He addressed that to Tom Martin by mistake. With that, he said, yes, this does qualify for a free cut. And I wouldn't have purchased Nine Dogwood Lane. My corporation wouldn't have purchased Nine Dogwood Lane if it didn't, because it didn't financially make sense. But since we had his verbal blessing at that point, we move forward, purchase the property, hired a surveyor who spoke with Mr. Cotton, who's mentioned in the, just for the record, too. The zoning board asked me to, not the zoning board, I'm sorry, zoning office, asked me to present, tell them my points that I would present here tonight. I would have appreciated if they gave me their letter prior to this meeting. It would have been nice. But it's here now. We'll do it. The surveyor and the planner spoke directly. I'm not a zoning expert by any means. And they, he said what he wanted. He said what he needed. They went back and forth. Finally, I got a phone call, said, you owe me. Come pay me, because your map is done. And I said, okay. And I went down, I picked up the map and the Mylar, brought it to Mr. Beach, who reviewed it again. He said, yes. He initialed and signed the map in the lower right-hand corner. If you look at the full-size map that Ms. Martin has. And asked me to go, actually, first made me get a Mylar copy and have them brought it back, where he looked at it again, reviewed it, signed it, and let me put it on the land records. At that point, the town assessor, doesn't miss a trick, started assessing it at full value, after he told me he spoke with Mr. Beach, that is, a legal building lot of record, and is taxed as such. Short time later, I went to get a septic permit on the property, which became contentious. And I had a problem with the Farmers Valley Health District, which, I'm not sure if it's really a division of the town or not, but they work under town authority. And it got to the point where the town, the Farmers Valley Health District Sanitarium said to me, you think that your 70-year-old, 50 years in practice professional engineer is lying or mistaken about the results of the soil testing? I said, really? And this went on for a year and a half. And I said, all right, I will retest the property. If that's it, I'll retest it in front of everybody you can think of, as long as you say you'll issue me a permit. And this, and they said, no. They said, we may come up with something else. I said, time to go to court. We filed a formal appeal and state. Town attorney got involved. We all met at the property. We redid the tests. Much, they were so surprised. They were exactly the same as what the engineer said they were. They issued a permit. Prior to that, the same sanitarian had complained to the town stating that, yeah, we know this land is not on the town wetlands map, and she said, I have absolutely no background in soil science or wetlands, but I think there's wetlands there, and he should be forced to test it for wetlands. Now, prior to me buying the property, I said, and I have specific to Mr. Beach, do I need to have this property tested for wetlands, is it wetlands? He said, no, you're nowhere near the wetlands map in the town of Simsbury. You will not have to have it tested. There's no wetlands around you, near you, by you. So on that, I move forward. This girl brought a new map that the town, it's an unapproved unofficial map on a very large scale, that said there might be wetlands near my property. Based on that, the town sent me a letter saying, we want you to test your lot for. And if you look in that, in that letter dated, let me get the date on it, from Mr. Beach, where he tells me he wants to help my property test it for wetlands, he refers to the lot as your newly-created lot.
Which letter is that?
I'll find it, sir.
September 23rd, 2011?
I believe so. Wait, September 23rd? No. It was January. One second.
Yeah, it's the first sentence of the January 30th.
January 30th.
Right. Your newly-created lot. We went back and forth, and I said, you know, I'm not on the town wetlands map. You told me I didn't have to do wetlands on this. Why would I have to do this when no one else, if you're not anywhere near the wetlands, why would I have to be picking? Now, I feel I'm already being picked on by the Farmers Valley Health District in a terrible way. And it cost me a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of aggravation to show that my engineer was not a liar or incompetent. So, let me say, my, you know, hair on my back was up. And I said, well, I'm not doing it. And we went back and forth. Mr. Beach retired. I went to Mr. Glidden, and he said, no, you have to do it. And I said, well, review it. I don't think you should wait me to do it, blah, blah, blah. He then said, I, so to bring it to a head, I applied for, I transferred the property in my name, took care of myself, and applied for a building permit. And he said he was going to deny it if I did. Well, lo and behold, he then decided, after careful review, if you look at his letter dated, I believe, March 6th, after careful review, that my lot isn't a lot at all. It was subdivided illegally. Very coincidental. So, and goes to my feeling of being treated unfairly. And basically, here we are today, based on that. I mean, my evidence is clear-cut that your planner, oh, there's a key statement in their notes, their background. They say that Mr. Beach sent me a letter saying, well, this is, he didn't approve, or not approve, he, let me, one glass on here. He said, noted that property division did not go through review by the planning commission. It wouldn't, because it's the first cut. What was reviewed by Howard Beach as a lot split. When Mr. Beach reviewed this matter, that is false. Mr. Beach reviewed, before me owning the property, Mr. Beach wrote that letter in 2011. It was years later, when he approved it, that we met the requirements of the letter dated September 23rd. Do you follow me?
Not sure I do, but.
Well, in their letter, they sort of say, like, yeah, he approved it if you, if I went forward and did all these other things. Before I bought the property, he told me what I needed to do. Two years later, year and a half later, I had already done all those, and that's what was submitted. They're insinuating that they approved it, but said with the caveat, this letter is, the letter was two years prior to that.
Have you built the extension of the street line?
I have not built an extension of the street line, and I'm going to talk about that in a minute.
Okay.
I don't think Mr. Beach to be a dumb man, and I don't think him to be a dishonest man. I don't, so I'm thinking that he had a plan when he approved this. He was in zoning his whole life. I'm not a zoning guy, but he did, had no problems with it and said, yes, this is it. And he even said, do you need, I don't know whether you need to build this road or not. But the law says the road had to exist prior to me getting the, or the frontage had to exist prior to me getting the split. So, under the definitions in the zoning regulations, a road is any way, I believe. And there is a right of way that it was placed right on top of, which is a water main. So I'm only, I'm guessing, and I'm not saying that is evidentiary fact, what Mr. Beach would think. I was hoping that you would have called Mr. Beach, or they would have called Mr. Beach, and said, what were you thinking when you approved this property? I don't see any communicate, memorandum of communicating here from Mr. Beach, but we can get that at our next venue. So that brought me here today, and that's where I'm at. I, you probably know that I filed a appeal with the state in reference to being forced to test my property for wetlands. They were, town served yesterday, and I'm going to move forward with that. I'll probably, if we have a problem here, we'll modify that appeal and add this to it and get it all straightened out. Thank you.
You can stay there, because we'll keep going through it. Does, on the map, the large map, there's a house number nine?
That's mine.
That's where you live? That's where you reside? Okay. And then this is the, this is the split here?
Yes.
Yep. Sort of like a.
It's right on top of the, the.
It's like an N shape, almost.
Right.
Yeah. And then you, this is what you're proposing to build on?
Right.
Parcel B is shown on that. It's, for the record, it's map 3976 that we're looking at. Do we have a copy of the Health District septic permit for the record?
I don't have one on me. It was issued, it might have it.
That list is for the record.
Mr. Chairman, do you know if anybody from the town has reached out to Mr. Beach and discussed this with him?
I don't know.
You don't know? He's in town. He's on the list. Howard Beach.
Did you ask him to be present?
I didn't ask him to present, actually. He was traveling the other way. I think he lives in Vermont, but still went to home.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, he moved out of town, yeah.
Because this is unusual, this isn't an application that we've had before us, and then they're appealing it. This is an appeal of the zoning official's.
Correct.
Determination, and then subsequent determinations, which seem like they have added up.
Right, so.
Even this most recent letter, as of two days ago.
Yeah, and our town attorney is here. He can address this, but the zoning statutes permit someone who applies to the zoning official, feels aggrieved from a decision of the zoning official, acting as the zoning official, to apply to the ZBA to essentially appeal it. So where, this is not a variance. This is basically the applicant saying that he believes that the zoning enforcement officer got it wrong. And correct me if I'm.
That's correct. That's correct.
And then, can we be clear on what the appeal? It seems like with the documentation, there may be several concerns of the zoning official's determinations. Are there multiple, or are we looking at one?
There's only one issue here, and that's the determination by the zoning enforcement officer in his March 4th, 2015, letter asking for certain information to be filed within 30 days. Mr. Martin filed this appeal April 1st, which was not within 30 days. That was taken as his intention not to provide the information requested. And as, on the basis of that, the zoning enforcement officer denied his application for a building permit. What you have in front of you is the denial of the application for the building permit by the zoning enforcement officer. Wetlands is one of the two issues cited by the zoning enforcement officer. The other is the lack of a map showing the required frontage for a building lot in the zone. That's really the two issues here.
Okay. It seems like there are multiple ones, so I just want to be clear on what we would be voting on.
Well, Mr. Martin mentioned multiple issues, and really, the Farmers Valley Health District permit is not material to this application.
I don't think the wetlands issue is. You don't hear wetlands appeals, do you?
No, that was actually, you anticipated a question. Are you here suggesting that we have the authority to rule as to whether or not you need a wetlands permit? Okay, so you agree that that's not an issue that's before this court?
That's already on its way.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that. So you're, basically, your issue, just in a nutshell, is whether or not this parcel B is shown on this map 3976, whether or not that is a.
Legal lot of record.
A legal lot complying with the zoning regulations or not?
Yes.
That's the only thing that you're here asking for determination of?
That's all I'm here to, I was told I have a signed map with approval from the town planner, whether he has the authority to do so or not. He signed it. He was the planner. He approved it.
Is it your position that being able to split the lot is one in the same as being able to build on the split lot?
Well, that's a, that's a triple-sided question. I mean, that's. Basically, if it's a legal lot of record, eventually, it's either buildable or it's condemned inversely. So, yes, if you make it a legal lot of record, and you say this is a lot of record, you don't let me build on it, you've condemned it, then yes. One of the two. Either you're going to let me build it, or you're going to condemn it. But once it's a legal lot of record, yes, I think it's a building lot. If it needs septic approval.
Okay. But you're not, you're not asking us to determine whether or not it's buildable?
No, not at all. I'm asking you to determine whether or not it's a legal lot of record as it stands.
Okay.
Obviously, it was, it was approved, the split was approved. If I were to split it, five, and get, I have three acres there. If I was to split it and put three separate lots there, Mr. Beach obviously would never have approved it. He approved it. He drew that road on there, the 200 feet, said, here, you need this 200 feet, put the paper road on there. It was in his direction.
Well, I, I understand that that's your, your statement of what Mr. Beach.
Oh, I know. I mean, same is a fact we can get to, but assuming that I'm telling the truth, and that I can prove that Mr. Beach did, in fact, sign that map and approve that map and design that map effectively, is this a legal lot of record that can be built on?
Is there, to your, in your opinion, currently 200 feet of lot frontage for parcel B as it sits on the ground today?
Well, I'm not a zoning expert.
Okay. Well, I'm just asking, you're the applicant. I'm asking your position.
There is. Along the way.
Okay. Is that a public way or not? I don't know.
It's a town-owned way. Town-owned right-of-way. If you pull up the zoning regulations for road, I believe it says any way. And that, that easement that goes through the property is a town-owned right-of-way for water.
Is that easement in the record?
I believe it is. Yes, it is.
Chairman, there's never been a recorded easement for that area depicted on that map. It's never been accepted by the town.
I disagree.
Well, that's what I'm asking. Is that in the record?
It's in my title search when I did it.
Is that before us tonight?
I don't have it. Actually, it was represented by Chip Bullman. I can get it.
Yeah, normally.
Obviously, if you had a, you have a easement through your property, it's, it's going to be on the land records.
And, and that's, I mean, our town attorney's saying that there is no such document. That's why I'm trying to get, that's what I'm trying to get to the bottom of. Do folks have questions for the applicant before we ask the town officials to come forward? We can always ask more questions after.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Mr. Glidden, do you want to present?
Just for the record, Mike Glidden, zoning enforcement officer for the Town of Simsbury. The easel for everything. This was the map on the easels, map number 3976, filed at the town clerk's office. It's exhibit one in the package material that you received. Just first, to just follow up on a few issues. My letter dated March 4th, 2015, this was in response of reviewing the plan submitted, and I'll show you. Development to build a single-family house in a parcel or area off of Lark Road. One of the issues while reviewing this, we'll go back to the division map, was when we talk about the required frontage. You're creating a lot within an, within the R40 zoning district, you need 200 feet of frontage on an approved road. Back in September 2011, I'm just going to read verbatim the letter that has been referenced from Mr. Beach into the record. The fact that the property is eligible for a free, a free split does not qualify the newly-created parcel as a building lot. The meet that, the meet to, I'm falling exactly. To meet, sorry. Okay, Phil. You will have to meet the following requirements. A map filed on town clerk's showing proposed lot configuration. A new lot must have a required 200 feet of frontage on an approved road. Just want to leave it at that, right, first off. The parcel B, which is shown right here off of the cul-de-sac of Lark Road, if you kind of look at it, so in exhibit 11 and 12 in your packet, show the two subdivision plans for Lark Road and Dogwood. These two were just cul-de-sacs that terminated right here. There was never a through road shown in the division, the lot line divisions. So, for this portion of the parcel, formerly known, or commonly known as Nine Dogwood, you have 2015 and 15, that's only 50 feet of frontage. Under our regs, if you were creating a lot, it would reduce, it would be considered a rear lot. And there's a whole standards we look at. When was the lot created? Has it been modified since? There's a magic date in the 60s that have to do with it. One of the, one of the comments I made to the applicant was that, you know, the lot doesn't meet the frontage requirements. You can't get a building permit for a lot that doesn't meet zoning. Not everyone's entitled to develop the lot. You have to meet zoning first to create a legal lot. So, the option B is go through the rear lot provision, meaning apply for special exception with the zoning commission, which would, one, entitled to legalize the split, two, it would allow to develop the parcel. And we'll, we'll kind of just talk about the frontage issue first. No such application has been filed with the zoning commission to date or previously. So, we have that frontage issue. If you go back to my March 4th, 2015, letter, just the issues with, we've already said that this is not, we're not here on the wetlands issue tonight. That's something for the conservation commission. Applicant is agreed. We'll, we'll kind of leave that where it is. Other issues were just concerns with the actual site development. One, there's a memo from Rich Zawitski dated, I'll pull up the date for you.
Chairman, this is about drainage. I'm looking at.
January 2, January 17th, 2014.
Look, we don't, we're not operating under the Connecticut Rules of Evidence, okay? Unless something is just patently, just outside the scope of this, it's all coming in. And, and nobody's going to gavel you down either, sir.
All right, very good. That's, yeah.
Part of the other review, we talked, we talked first about the legality. If anyone has any questions, we can go back to that issue. But also was the actual site development details. Whether it be drainage, and also having an A2 survey showing the proposed home's location. In this case, Minniana House that's just meeting the side yard setback. So therefore, so that this board doesn't see, and as built later, showing something that wasn't built in the right location, we require that new house provide an A2 survey certifying that, that that structure meets zoning. But I go back to, you need a lot that meets zoning. We're not denying reasonable use of this property. If these two parcels were to be rejoined as one, known as Nine Dogwood, the owner could put a pool over there. He could put a shed. He could have a tennis court. There's other uses. That's kind of zoning, everyone is allowed to have a use of a property, but subdividing and developing is reserved for someone, is reserved to parcels that, that can meet the standards. So you have sort of a uniform development that's consistent with the comprehensive plan. In this case, this will be, it would not be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. And just last, to get back on the frontage issue, one of the comments saying opposed a street line extension. Obviously, if that went through, one, one of the abilities of the planning commission would be to approve layout of streets. Then it would have to go through the whole acceptance, acceptance policy through the Board of Select and Planning Commission, et cetera. In this case, no, no such, this has never was approved, so that's basically get back to why this little area that I highlighted in green, the 50 feet, is the frontage for the greatest portion of the property on Lark Road.
Is there any dispute that this was a so-called first split or a free split?
No.
Okay. So, so Planning Commission did not have to get involved in this, correct?
No, it's, yeah, it would be, just as Howard Beach's letter back in 2011 stated, it qualifies for a free, free split, but. it qualifies for a free, free split, but, once again, the issue with a building lot, it's a whole different ballgame.
I guess I would just follow up with that, then. What would, why would a homeowner wanna do a split if it was pretty clear and laid out that it would not be buildable?
I could not answer that question for you.
I just think if there are other exceptions or other ways, you know, that you could use it for other purposes, not building on it, but you could, the split to use it in some other fashion.
You could do a, a split for like an agricultural purpose, you know, you wanted to use this to, for, for some sort of farming operation, you had that under the reg, under the state statute to do that. It's one of the only ones coming to my mind right now.
Or with the expectation that it would be buildable at some point in time, perhaps. But that's an assumption, right?
Under the, going down the road of an agricultural split, I mean, you're really doing it for a purpose of using it as part of the farming, farming use. So not really with the understanding that I'm developing it. And kind of, it's very different if you, as Ms. Martin asked, the other options, you can split it, but yet not really develop it. So, now, all of my, all of our opinions are pretty, well outlined in my comments, uh, the March 4th letter and also with Hiram Peck's, uh, April 20th, 2015, uh, comments to the board, so.
Um, can I ask also, while I have here, the, um, option of a rear lot provision?
Mm-hmm.
So, under this, under a regular lot, you need the extra frontage that does not exist on here. If you were to apply for a rear lot provision, what would that entail?
Well, in this case, um, you could use, utilize the frontage, the 50 feet, because you'd have two lots that, well, this is, nine Dogwood, the existing residence is considered, it's a, it's a pre-existing non-conforming.
It's not all by me. These are two separate parcels.
Sir, when, when he's done, before we go to even public comment, I'm gonna let you do a rebuttal, okay?
Thank you.
You're gonna have more than your fair share of opportunity to speak, sir.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry for the interruption.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What the applicant could do is through a 50-foot right-of-way could serve both parcels, meaning utilizing his existing driveway that which would service the residence located at what's known as nine Dogwood, you could have another easement branching off to a portion, which we can call Lark Road parcel. That would be approved by special exception by the zoning commission and is allowed under the regs, but, once again, you'd have to go through the special exception, uh, process and meet the criteria. One of the things is that the lot has been in existence in the current configuration prior to, it's an arbitrary date in, I believe it's, uh, 1969.
Oh, so that wouldn't pertain to this lot here?
That, this lot would qualify for that. This, so-
Okay. All right, just wanna be clear about options and what we're looking at here, okay?
So, we're here basically just to evaluate your decision as, as CEO to deny him the building permit, right? And you denied him the building permit on the grounds that he doesn't meet the frontage requirements, there are possible wetlands, uh, problems, and what are the other, what are the other items? The reasons?
Uh, submission requirements, that's what I was talking about, the A2 survey. It's, it's kind of, that, go to the, uh, March 4th, uh, letter, it outlines everything, kinda broke it down in three different categories, from a zoning standpoint, looking at the lot's, uh, legality, or, or, or beating the, the requirements of the zoning regulations, to, um, the wetlands component, and three, just the standard submissions for building a new residence in town.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Because we're talking about zoning permits and we're talking about building permits, and I just wanna understand what our task is, maybe this is more a question for you about. Let's everybody agree that this was a, a lot that complied with zoning, and all we're talking about was the failure to issue a building permit. Is the failure to issue a building permit something that's appealable to the CEO?
No, the CEO has to sign off on the building permit before it can be issued, has to, has to confirm that the subject of the building permit, the lot, conforms with zoning.
Okay.
And the zoning enforcement officer reviewed this application for a building permit, he refused to sign it based on his findings that it didn't comply with zoning.
Okay.
So what's in front of you is that determination, that decision, as the statute uses the word "decision,"
Yep.
to deny it based on its failure to comply with zoning.
To deny the building permit, right?
Uh, decision not to sign off on the issuance of the building permit. Building permits are issued by the building official, but cannot be issued by the building official in the absence of the, the sign-off.
Right, right. So, do these issues, like, in this memo of-
March 4th?
March 4th, 2014?
15.
15. You know, there's, there's a section about site development details, and there was concerns about the first floor elevations and three and a half feet of fill. That's not really before us, is it?
Well, that's part of the zoning enforcement officer's determination, uh, decision not to sign, uh, sign off to the building permit because the required information was not submitted. And his letter says, "I need 30 days to submit that information." And Mr. Martin filed this appeal April 1st, which was the 26th day, um, but that was, rather than make him file another one a day later, the determination was made that that was his, his response was, he's not gonna submit the information.
So basically, if any one of these items that Mr. Glidden has delineated for his reasons for denying or, or failing to sign whatever for the, for the building permit is justifiable, then it would, we would be inclined to, to affirm his decision.
Well, it's what we're being asked, right?
Yeah.
And what's being appealed is this, what he's outlined in this memo.
Right. And that's really all we're concerned with, right?
Right.
So that, so, to me, like, you know, wetlands thing is not really, so let's just move that aside, let's just look at one of the items, like, he says the A2 survey and the other things. So if, if that's not met and that's criteria that's legitimate, then he would be justified in, in, uh, not issuing the, the permit. Or if the frontage requirement can't be met, then he would be justified in doing that, and it's-
All right, there's a good question. Here's, here's how I'd like to do this, I'd like the town attorneys come to the podium, I'd like him to answer this question. And then, if you have something on this specific issue of jurisdiction, I'll let you chime in when the town attorney's done, but just on that issue-
My appeal is specific to the one issue. It says in my appeal, I'm appealing only the issue of his decision that the lot is not a legal building lot, it's right in my appeal. I'm not appealing that I need an A2 survey, I'm not appealing whether there's wetlands, I'm appealing the one issue of his many zoning issues.
His determination that does not comply with-
Right.
Mr. Town Attorney.
Okay. Uh, just to be clear, what rules you're operating under, 8-7 appeals to the board, zoning board of appeals. A concurring vote of four members of the zoning board of appeals is necessary to reverse any order, requirement, or decision of the official charge with the enforcement of the zoning regulations, or to decide in favor of the applicant on any matter upon which is required to pass under bylaw ordinance, rule, regulation, or to vary, that's variance, but it's a decision to, necessary to reverse any order, requirement, or decision. What you have here is a decision not to sign off on the building permit. Mr. Martin wants to limit that to one issue. I suppose you're constrained by what he submitted to you, but I, I'm assuming what he's saying is, if we get past that issue, he's more than happy to submit the other information, is that correct?
Yes, and that they did submit some of that, it's not shown, but-
Yeah. So, the issue here comes down to compliance with the zoning regulations. Everyone agrees that this lot, this division of land, we keep calling it a lot, and that maybe the semantics of that is confusing to some. The reason why this lot division was not submitted to the planning commission is because it didn't meet the, it didn't meet the definition of a subdivision of land in that Mr. Beach made a determination, correctly, I believe, that it was a first cut. So it's outside, it's not within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. That first cut means that the property owner, uh, files a map with the town clerk indicating that he's, he or she's dividing his or her land from one parcel to two. Soon as you get to three, you're in front of the planning commission. Mr. Beach, I won't read the letter again, said, "Yeah, you can divide your land, you own it, it's not subject to planning commission, however, be aware that in the R40 zone, there are certain, um, heightened area requirements you must meet to transfer your divided parcel into a buildable lot." And that's found, those requirements are found in Article 8, Section A, Heightened Area Requirements. It's the table you're probably all familiar with in the zoning regulations on page 73 of 165. In the R40 zone, there's a number of requirements, 40,000 square foot lot area, lot frontage 200 feet. So what does lot frontage mean? We go to the regulations, the definitions, which are found, um, in, and I'm doing all this because, you know, there's likely to be an appeal of this to court, or at least Mr. Martin's told me he's gonna appeal at the court if it doesn't go his way, and that's his right, but we wanna be clear in the transcript what's going on here. Article 4, Section B, Definitions, on page 30 of 165, lot frontage, which is what we're talking about from Article 8, Section A.
Mm-hmm.
Lot frontage. The distance between the sidelines of a lot measured either along the front street line or the interior lot line, on the front street line or the interior lot line. Front street line, so what's a street? Again, we look to the definitions of what a street is, um, and a street is defined, a lot of S definitions here. Street, a thoroughfare for pedestrian and vehicle access. There is no thoroughfare for pedestrian street or access into the area of the divided parcel. There is a indication on the plan of a, I don't know what it's labeled as.
Proposed extension of street line for frontage.
Proposed extension of street line for frontage purposes. On March 4th, 2015, when the zoning enforcement officer issued his letter, there was no physical street in the area shown as depict, uh, proposed line of street. Now, what does it take to get a street built and accepted? Um, it has to meet the standards of the zoning regulations, it has to be dedicated to the town, and most importantly, the town has to accept it. Then and only then do you have street, a street. And there's all kinds of ways and public ways, and you mentioned the word "way." The definitions in the regulations talk about street frontage and define street as defined in the regulations. This is the background that the zoning enforcement officer is obligated, has no discretion, has to look at the plan, apply the, the, what's shown on the plan to the regulations, and make a determination of whether or not what's depicted on the plan meets the, uh, the standards within the regulations for the zone. And when you do that, it's just, uh, he came to the conclusion that there was no street frontage for this divided parcel that met the requirements of Article 8, Section A. Is that basically?
That is correct.
And I'm restating what he said, but I want the record to reflect that these, um, terms are defined within the regulations, and they control the, the determination of whether or not this plan meets the qualifica- the standards and qualifications for a so-called buildable lot within the R40 zone.
Any questions for the town attorney before we have Mr. Martin respond to that?
No. And I, I'll just conclude by saying, this should not be news to Mr. Martin, because in the letter from Mr. Beach, uh, that goes back, that was, uh, recited from, I believe it's from 2011, um, these standards were set out in the letter. And just also to be clear, what Mr. Beach said or didn't say, or indicated or didn't indicate is of no moment. What matters is what the regulations required and what the plan presented to the zoning enforcement officer depicted. And did the plan as depicted meet the requirements of the zoning regulations? That's what controls here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Martin, is there anything you wanna respond to on?
Several issues.
Okay, if you could just go to the podium.
If you wish, you don't have to, but that'd be easier.
Try and be quick, 'cause this is gonna go on forever. First of all, uh, looking at this map and the, the, obviously it was signed by Mr. Beach and approved. Mr. Beach is the one who designed the proposed extension of street line for frontage purposes. How was Mr. Beach's idea? Mr. Beach told the surveyor to draw this on, "I'm not a zoning expert," the surveyor and a planner who said, "Draw this on here for the purpose of frontage." Now, I, I, I don't pretend to be a zoning expert, and, but I think Mr. Beach, and most surveyors are, pretty well-versed in it. He then goes and signs it. He approved that road, that paper road. And at that point, the second this, the town files, that road was a paper road approved, making this lot an approved building lot, whether it was built or not. And whether he had the authority to do it really has no bearing either, because he's your agent. And, and in my experiences, I used to work for the federal government, and if I said something as a federal agent and promised someone immunity, whether I had the authority to do so or not, he had immunity, because I gave it to him as your agent. So whether Mr. Beach had the authority, or Mr. Beach made a mistake, and this whole idea that this was done something for an agricultural split, when you read Mr. Beach's letter dated January 30th, 2014, where we talk about the wetlands issue, he says, "You also indicated you're cont-" I'm sorry, paragraph three, he says, "You are also indicated you are contemplating revising the lot line for newly, for the newly-created lot." He doesn't say newly-created parcel, again, lot. This will have to be done, and an amended map and deed will, will have to be filed with the town clerk before any building permits can be issued for construction, so I can verify the setback compliance with the newly-created lot lines. Does that sound like a, I'm not gonna, obviously-
I understand that's rhetorical.
Yeah, yeah, it's rhetorical, but it's, it was obviously Mr. Beach's intention to create a building lot, and, and, and allow me to create a building lot, and then when he spoke to the town assessor, he thought he had let me create a building lot and signed off and then put his approval on there. If this map were filed, which it could have been, without any approvals, I, I'd agree with Mr. Glidden, but Mr. Beach, as your town planner, signed it and approved it, and refers to it over and over again as a, as a lot, building lot, right there. Yeah, yeah, that one. And if you go to town maps, they're all laid on top of each other, every single one of them has Mr. Beach's signatures in the exact same spot, in the exact same formality. Now, if we're playing games evidentiary, and like, you know, if we bring in a handwriting expert, I can do that, that can be done, but Mr. Beach will tell you, one phone call, "Yes, I signed off on it, everybody in the zoning office knows he signed off on it." What his intentions were, it'd be nice if somebody called him and said. One other thing I wanna say is, these two parcels are no longer held in the same name. This is owned by a corporation I happen to be a member of, this is owned by me. And that was done prior to my, to Mr. Glidden's opinion that it was not a zone, a, uh, building lot of record. The town representative has a lot of record, any reasonable person, whether a zoning expert, even a zoning expert would say, "Yes, that's a lot of record." It's tax is a zoning record, the lot that created was signed off by the town planner. So when I took titles on this other property, I was under full impression that it was a building lot of record. That's it for now, thank you.
I just, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
No. So, just real quick, so, you, you agree that you have not dedicated that area, nor has it been accepted by the town, correct?
Dedicated what area?
The, the area shown on map 3976 as proposed extension of street line for frontage purposes-
Dedicated in what way?
Have you dedicated that land to the town of Simsville?
Yes, I have.
Has it been approved by the board of select?
No.
Okay.
That's sort of rhetorical.
No, I'm just asking what you're understanding.
Nothing went beyond, you're the first board to even see this other than-
And by dedicate, your act to dedicate was the filing of this map?
Yes.
Anything else to dedicate?
No.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand a question.
Okay, no, that's why I clarified.
Sure.
Okay. Um, I see that there's some folks here, we wanna give everybody the opportunity to speak as long as they want. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this application, on this appeal?
There are, I believe, three, correct me if I'm wrong, letters that were submitted by neighbors that have been stamped as received.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just gonna, because we are making a record, I'm gonna read these. There's an April-
I would like to speak.
Oh, you would? Okay. Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I apologize. If you wouldn't mind, I just state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Sure. My name's David Horowitz. My address is six Hayer Drive, so I'm an adjoining landowner.
Hayer, you said, Drive?
On Hayer Drive.
H-I-G?
H-Y-E-R. Hayer Drive is on the map over here, and so this is my parcel. And I just wanted to comment on the issue of drainage, which I saw was sort of raised in Mr. Glidden's letter to the applicant. I, I mean, I do think that there are serious concerns with developing the lot in terms of the impact on drainage on the adjoining parcels. The, overall, the slope of the land is a very slight slope, I think, down from Lark Road, down to Hayer, and then on to Old Farms Road. And I just find that I've got a very wet lot. And I think there's a good deal of water that is coming off of this lot, you know, both, both properties, the parcel B and the old parcel, which, in a heavy rainstorm, would sort of keep my sump pump going continually, I've got a curtain drain around the basement, but there's still issues of drainage. And so, I mean, I don't know what the technical term would be, but I think there's not a river, but there's sort of a natural stream that flows along here, along what's labeled parcel B, down along the edge of Dogwood Lane. There was a ditch that separated five Dogwood and six Hayer that sort of continued on down to Old Farms, that carried a good deal of rain flow through, and some twenty years or so ago. Part of that was covered over from the end of Dogwood Lane to roughly the end of my property. But there's still a lot of water that collects on Dogwood, and the water that doesn't find its way into the ditch, I think, ends up in my backyard. So I end up with kind of an involuntary swimming pool certain times a year. So I don't know whether this is wetland under city or state or federal designation, but I know it's soggy land, that if you go out there after a rainstorm, there's a lot of water on the surface, and the water stays there for a goodly amount of time. There is a sort of ditch, which may have been a stream at one point, that's incomplete, that goes along part of that land over here, which kind of stays wet for a good part of the year. So it seems that the water table is very near the surface on this property, so that I think the concerns that Mr. Glidden expressed in his letter about drainage impact from this development are really well-taken. I would be very concerned with any kind of development that increases the amount of impermeable coverage, because I think the water is going to end up flowing into my property, and it's going to end up flowing along Dogwood Lane. And I just want to put that on the record and say that, as any kind of potential development is considered, that should be kept in mind. I mean, certainly, the idea of putting in additional asphalt to extend Lark Road would really just be putting a pipeline, you know, which would shoot the water that's already flowing down Lark Road through the property into the adjoining landowners. I think to the extent that really the amount of native vegetation can be kept there, so the trees and plant life are not cleared, I think it creates a useful sink for water, you know, coming down. So, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight and speaking. There's an April fifteenth letter from Rita Patchla, Pakla? Seven Lark Road. I support the zoning enforcement office's decision regarding nine Lark Road. Sent to Tim Martin in a letter dated March fourth, two thousand and fifteen, as to the wetland issue. When homes are built on wetlands, this is what happens. Home builders who tamper with even small wetlands can have big problems. Wetlands are superb at purifying polluted water, but terrible places to build houses. Wetlands act like natural sponges, absorbing and gradually releasing storm waters, and lessening flood damage when filled much of that water pours into people's homes. This is only one small issue relating to building here. There are multiple other issues to be addressed by Mr. Martin as well, which have been clearly spelled out for him. The fact that he has literally bulldozed ahead, ignoring the details, and even going so far as marketing this property speaks volumes about how he operates. I am one of the owners of the abutting properties, and requesting you disapprove the petition by Dauntless Construction.
You're a little there, just for people who...
I'm sorry. I have, if it's been submitted, it has to be read. I don't know which one is yours. Do you want to help share?
Sure.
Okay.
This is a letter dated April twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, zoning board of appeals members. I am writing this letter to express my strong objections to the development of nine Lark Road. The lot is very wet every spring, as generations of children who have made bridges across the swampy land will attest. I have enclosed photographs I took on the lot on April ninth, two thousand and fifteen. Although the abrupt and savage deforestation is new, the three to five inches of standing water through the spring is not. I cannot attend the zoning board of appeal meeting on April twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, but as a concerned Lark Road neighbor, I wanted to express my grave concern about the development of nine Lark Road, as well as the reckless manner that it has already been approached. Sincerely, Heather Carroll at three Lark Road, Simsbury, Connecticut. Those photographs I took of the lot. Thank you.
These letters are in the record, to the exception of any deviation from the transcript in the letter, it's the letter's control. The last letter was received April twenty-second. This is from Stephen Mary Perkins, eight Lark Road, Simsbury. My wife, Mary, and I have been residents of Simsbury since nineteen eighty-three and have resided at eight Lark Road for more than twenty-five years, so we are very familiar with the surface and groundwater situation that exists at nine Dogwood. We write this letter to request you disapprove the petition by Dauntless Construction. We're attempting to avoid important soil analyses for the determination of wetlands on this property. As background, it is of no surprise that this lot was originally established to be almost four acres in size, much larger than the one acre zoning required when the neighborhood was developed. This property for more than fifty years has not been subdivided, as the current owner would desire, for one very good and simple reason, it is wet. And aside from its inherent undesirability, if you're going to consider residing on it, it serves a vitally important role as open land to support the necessary drainage and flow of water from the surrounding properties, all have existed since the mid-sixties. There are colored photos in that one. Pardon me. In considering your decision with respect to the petition, we would like to point out the following regarding recent decisions by Dauntless. One, the dwelling at nine Dogwood was demolished without a proper permit. Two, the demolished dwelling was both open burned and buried on site without proper permit. Three, a new dwelling of more than one thousand square feet larger than the one on the demolished was constructed without redesign, enlargement, or permit by the Farmington Valley Health, F V H, of the existing nineteen sixty septic system. The area being petitioned has been completely clear-cut, with brush and full trees having been left for over one year laying on the ground, over one acre of mature trees. Dauntless has for over a year now publicly advertised a separate building lot at nine Dogwood, and misrepresented it as nine Lark Road. Beyond the specific petition being discussed today, we fully support the town's decision for denial of the, and there's a typo, application by Dauntless to establish a residence off Lark Road, including any future requests for variance to establish access from Lark Road to any proposed, quote, "back lot," unquote, at nine Dogwood. Dauntless Construction's property is established as nine Dogwood with less than the required road frontage, open print only fifty feet, closed print on Lark Road, if a quote, "split" or "back," were to be approved by the town, it should be clearly stipulated that access be from nine Dogwood. As an abutter, we would ask that the members of your commission walk the property of nine Dogwood to see the water conditions there. I especially highlight to you the areas adjoining it and close to the cul-de-sac of Lark Road. See attached recent photos. Where we have understood Dauntless Construction proposes cutting a road to nine Dogwood. If allowed, we believe this would have significant impact to existing abutting properties. This is based on the following. A, the fifty-foot, quote, "frontage" that nine Dogwood has on Lark is directly in line with an established town storm drain at the end of the Lark cul-de-sac, which is critical to managing the frequent storm water runoff and substantial annual spring flow. Open print for months, closed print that runs down Lark Road. B, the property in nine Dogwood, abutting eight Lark and seven Lark, to include the fifty feet of frontage that nine Dogwood has on Lark, has standing water on the surface for better than six months of the year. Currently serves to accept spring and stormwater flow traveling from the north, Briarwood Road, to the south, the cul-de-sac area of Annmar Lane, period. If a road or driver established at this location, the natural flow would be significantly disrupted, and I fear so too the functionality of surrounding septic systems, as well as basements, et cetera. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
You want to read who that was from?
Yeah, I did, but, again, that's Stephen Mary Perkins, eight Lark Road. So I'll do this one last time. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to speak tonight? There is not. Mr. Martin, I'm going to give you the last word. Before I do that, does staff have anything that they wish to add further?
I have a note for the record that Mr. Martin has submitted, the affidavit that the public hearing site was posted on the property for fifteen days.
Okay. Thank you.
I would just, for the record, like to add a couple other issues about the process for dedication acceptance of a public road. It has to be done by deed, and that deed would have to be dedicated to the town and presented to the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen would then have to refer it to the planning commission for approval under general statutes eight dash twenty-four, and also eight dash twenty-nine. Eight dash twenty-nine is a statute that gives the planning commission authority to approve the layout of roads, even extensions of roads. There's nothing in this record tonight that indicates that any of that has been done or proposed or begun, and I think it's established tonight that there is, in fact, no public road on that plan as depicted. I'd also like to point out, and I think this is significant, this, Mr. Martin has indicated this map was prepared by Howard Beach. I think what Mr. Martin means, maybe clarify this, it was the surveyor who prepared this map did it based on recommendations given to him. Direction, okay. But in fact, it is by Stephen Cotton, who's a licensed land surveyor, and Mr. Cotton has entitled his map that he put his stamp on, he entitled it, "The Vision Plan Prepared for Tim Martin." He does not use the word "building lot" for Tim Martin. Now, we don't have Mr. Cotton here tonight, but I think there is a distinction between the vision plan and building lot, and also the consent that is being relied on by Mr. Martin, consent by Howard Beach or approval by Howard Beach is in the lower right-hand corner, where it appears as though Mr. Beach initialed the division plan, and thereafter, I guess, it was recorded. I just wanted to put those issues on the record.
And I guess, just from a legal process perspective, if, if an applicant or a property owner came to the town and said, "I'm dedicating a certain area to the town as a public road." Is the town under any obligation to accept that?
None whatsoever.
If there were, for example, wetlands directly underneath an area that was proposed as a public road?
The town can refuse to accept the dedication for any reason or no reason, and can't, the Board of Selectmen is the body that accepts, ultimately accepts overgrowth. Board of Selectmen cannot accept it without a report from the planning commission under eight dash twenty-four and approval of the layout under eight dash twenty-nine. And none of those steps have been taken.
Okay. If we were to accept that Mr. Beach did even explicitly state that, that he was approving it as a building lot, and then he retires, and a new Z E O comes in, would his statement obligate the Z E O to have made the decision to sign off on the building permit in that situation, if that situation existed?
That's a good question. Two doctrines that Mr. Martin alluded to, legal doctrines. One is equitable stoppall, which if an officer who has authority takes an action and a person relies on that action, a subsequent officer of the same greater authority is stopped from changing the entity's mind. Equitable, doctrine of equitable stoppall, however, does not normally apply to governmental units, municipalities in particular. There, a lot of times cases come up where the tax collector will agree to waive interest on taxes, and someone pays the taxes with the lower waived interest or whatever, and tries to rely on that, and cases uniformly say that there is no such thing as equitable stoppall in the payment and collection of taxes, for instance. The, the second doctrine that was alluded to is the doctrine of apparent authority, wherein certain statements may have been made by Howard Beach, who then held the office of zoning enforcement officer at the time these actions were taken. Mr. Beach, Mr. Beach's authority was limited to his office. He had no authority to accept the plan for a public road under eight twenty-four, no authority to supplant the authority of the Board of Selectmen. So his actual authority limited what he could and could not do. He could say, "Yep, this sure is a building lot. Yep, that's a road." It's not binding on the municipality, because other entities, agencies within the town, have the exclusive authority to take certain actions that need to be taken before you can put asphalt on that land and call it a public road.
And I guess, just to speak to that point, just in terms of the timeframe of it, so Howard Beach's letter dated September twenty-third, two thousand and eleven, clearly states, "These are the steps that you would need to take in order to build on this lot." Very clear, we've talked about it.
Right.
And then his signature on this map, you know, as you indicate, it's basically, it's a, it's a plan, it's a vision, maybe, for this. And I'm just thinking in terms of, as we're analyzing Howard Beach's words or decisions, and he's not here, that, you know, perhaps he's thinking, "I already, I already spelled out exactly what needs to happen, and all the approvals and other people, that's beyond my jurisdiction. I can, you know, I can say, yes, this was created by Henry Cotton and Associates, and, but I'm not giving approval if this is a building lot." Nowhere on here does it say it's a building lot, just to be clear on...
And the next step taken was the town clerk received it and recorded it. As we all know, the town clerk has no discretion whether or not to... The town clerk's recordation of a map has no legal effect on what that map says. It's simply a ministerial act that says, "Well, I was presented with a map that met the requirements of recording, and I recorded it."
Right.
An old saying, she, she's obligated to record a book of recipes if you're bringing it into her, and, you know, she's a ministerial actor, and she has an obligation to record those documents that are presented to her for recording.
Okay.
And that's what she did, and that's why it's recorded. The act of recording it also has no legal effect of supplanting the authority of these various agencies that have to pass, have to approve the creation and acceptance of a public road. And I, one last thing, I also think the depiction of this area, two hundred foot, exactly two hundred feet, I think the depiction of that future road is something the land surveyor would have to put on there before he could stamp it, because he has to put on the plan those things which zoning requires.
And without that road actually in existence...
There's no frontage.
There's no frontage. It's just a drawing right now. There's, there's fifty feet of frontage. But without that road, there's not two hundred feet of frontage.
The plan shows this, or, he's correct, this plan shows...
There's fifty.
At the end of the cul-de-sac, measures fifty feet.
There's fifty feet, but without that road that is right now just a drawing, the two hundred doesn't exist.
That's correct.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. DeCresis? Mr. Martin, I'm going to give you a last word, but I'm also going to assure you, we do not have to close the public hearing tonight. You've alluded to there's other stuff that you may want to get.
No, I don't.
It's, it's, it's up to you. We're under, you're under no pressure to wrap up tonight. If there's easements you want to go get off the land records and submit them and make the record, it's your record to make, sir. So I don't want you to feel any rush to conclude tonight.
No, I'm ready to conclude. Thank you. Phil. I'm just going to speak to a few issues. One of all, first of all, is, Mr. Beach fully intended this to be a building lot, and it says, obvious to anybody and everybody, when you read his correspondence, like the one I read before, in the bottom, "In summary, no construction can be approved on the site until we receive the following. One, revised survey with proposed lot line adjustments. Two, wetlands mapping. Three, a complete grading plan that shows existing and proposed contours for the site. And four, answers to the questions of the town engineer and the Farmington Valley Health Department." Nowhere on there does he say, "You need to build a road. You need to do anything other than do with a road." That's what I needed to do. Those are the four things he told me on January thirtieth I needed to do in order to construct a home on this property. So, the long and short of it is, we're playing games, in my opinion, and dancing on the issues because he's not here, and we're guessing what is. He fully intended this to be built on, and he created a building lot, in my opinion, and made me show this paper road of the two hundred feet, and Mr. Glidden would, under oath, will testify that Mr. Beach indicated that to him, that he was under the full impression by Mr. Beach when he worked with me that this was a building lot, and we were going to allow me to build on it if I met those requirements, which he's changed his opinion at this point, apparently. which he's changed his opinion at this point, apparently, but one other issue is, these are two separate owners and two separate parcels, and I am the owner of this parcel, that's before you say. What happens here, what goes on here is no bearing on the board that tends, it's a corporation. I am a member of the board of the corporation, I'm a member of the corporation.
But you physically live there, correct?
I physically live there, but there's no bearing, zero bearing on this application with this property. When he shows a rear lot here, these are two separate, completely, they might as well be in Mars. Nothing to do with each other. This is a map that, like I said before, if Mr. Beach screwed up by signing this and approving this, because you only see Mr. Beach's signature on maps that are approved. If you go to the town hall and look at the maps in the clerk's office, and he doesn't sign maps, and in fact, when I brought this map from Steve Cotton, I went directly to file it after Mr. Beach said it was okay, it's ready, they sent me to, they would not accept it, even though they said, "We'd like you to have Mr. Beach sign off on all maps that come to the office." I then went in and goes, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I wanted to look at it." Looked at it, reviewed it, signed it, scribed it into the Mylar, brought it back, then filed it. I've been, I've spent thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars on this property, developing this property, and in my contentious septic application, my formal appeal to the State Health Department, my re-application, my surveys, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, if someone had said, "Well, it's not a building lot anywhere along the line, indicated one ounce, we would have resolved it then," it never was mentioned. This is represented by your assessor as a full legal building lot of record. It's represented by any person in the industry of land use who sees a map that creates a lot with the town planners initials on it as an approved building lot. Did he do it in error? I don't know. I'm not a zoning guy, but I relied on it.
Are you referring to Mr. Beach as the town planner? Do you understand that he was not the town planner? The zone, the...
Zoning enforcement.
...co- enforcement officer?
I didn't know that. Actually, I thought he was a town planner, assistant town planner.
Okay.
But he was a person who designed it and signed off on it, initialled it.
Just for a point of clarification, at the time of the, what, the letter in 2014 from Howard Beach, he was not the duly appointed zoning enforcement officer of the town of Simsbury, Iowa?
Okay.
So that letter was not from the duly appointed zoning officer?
Nor was he a town planner.
Nor was he. That, that title, he's the conservation officer.
Okay, thanks.
Howard Beck is the town planner.
Thank you.
And it's unfortunate for me. It's like saying, I spoke to a guy and he had a badge, and I thought he was the cop, I thought he was the chief. I don't know who's who. As long as I get a letter in the mail, and he seems to be the boss, and he's the one that tells me, "This is what I gotta do to get a lot approved," and I have him talk to the guy, and he signs off on it. He must have had some strong authority, because it's his signature on all the approved subdivision maps in the, in the clerk's office. If nothing else, someone screwed up here big, and it wasn't me, and I'm gonna have to do whatever I can to either make it buildable or get reimbursed. Thank you.
Mike, could you flip that plan around for a second? And I don't know if that's in the record, but for the record, the other plan that was on the easel is something, it's a sheet C dash one, just so that if we ever need to identify what we were looking at.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's not in the record, right?
Well, it will be.
It is now.
Looks like it was prepared by Paul Pearlswig, Swig, West Hartford, Connecticut.
It was received by the Farmington Valley Health District on August 14th, 2014, prepared for Tim Martin, project location Lark Road, Simsbury, Connecticut, and it entitled "Site Plan, Site Improvements For Approved Single Family Dwelling Site Plan."
And has that gone before any other commission, or this is just here tonight?
It was the map that got it approved through septic. That's the septic plan.
Okay, but not before us, really?
Okay. Now, so the health district, it sounds like, correct?
The health district, yeah. And then with the, actually, the site plan I used to apply the building to that.
Can I ask one question?
Through the chair.
The chair, yes. The, where's the 200 square foot frontage on this plan?
Mr. Martin, can you identify the 200 feet of frontage?
Sure. It's right here.
Does that run through the entirety of the quote-new lot?
No, it doesn't. Well, this easement does. That water easement, it's 50 feet wide. I mean, I think it's, actually, 30 feet wide. This is the town water easement that goes through my property, and this for the 200 feet from Lark back, I think it's, I think it's 50 feet wide. Not sure, actually. This dotted line.
There were, there were no specifications for building that road on that C one sheet, correct?
No, actually, Mr. Beach said to me, he goes, "I don't think they're going to make you build it." I said, "What do you mean?" He goes, "They're just, you just had to show it." I said, "Oh, okay."
Well, Mr. Beach isn't here, but we'll, we'll, we'll take that for what it's worth. Last chance for the public, last chance for staff, last chance for commissioners.
No.
Mr. Martin, anything else?
No, I'm done, thank you.
Okay. You understand it's a record appeal tonight's your night?
I got it.
Okay.
Interesting thing. Once we close the hearing...
Once we close the public hearing, the record is the record.
We'll discuss them on Starcell's.
I got it.
Okay, and everybody's, okay. So with that, unless there's any objection, I will close the public hearing.
Nope.
Public hearing is closed. Procedurally, we now have, please correct me if I'm wrong, 65 days within which to render a decision based off on the record. There's no need for us to, we certainly could rule tonight. There's no requirement that we do that tonight. There's no requirement that we even deliberate tonight. If folks want to think about it, we could take this back up at our next meeting. If folks are pretty clear on what they want to do, we could deliberate and vote tonight. It's, it's up to, it's up to folks.
I think the applicant must to move on, and I think, rather than delaying whatever we decide, I think we have a lot of information that was presented.
I agree.
Okay.
I think we should vote.
Okay.
Agreed.
With that, is there a motion on the table, or would someone like to make a motion?
And it needs to be in the affirmative.
Correct.
Uh, well...
This is different than normal.
Well, in this case, hang on.
We, we need four affirmative votes to overturn the decision of the zoning enforcement officer.
Right.
So I would suggest, and this is procedural, so I'd ask the town attorney, I would suggest that the, I think to your point, the motion be in the affirmative?
That's typically how we do it. So, yeah, I will make a motion to approve application number 15 dash 02 of Timothy Martin to appeal a decision of the zoning official regarding the property located at Lark Road as specified on the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to essentially sustain the appeal and to overturn the ZEO's decision. So we have a motion, we have a second, and it's, it's proper for discussion at this point, if I'm sure folks want to discuss.
So I'll just start by saying that I think that it's unfortunate, from what I've heard, that the applicant believed that they were receiving information from employee of the town that was in a position to provide advice that could be, that, that, that decisions that the applicant could make, he could do so with comfort of knowing that it was, or believing that it was stuff he could rely on to move forward and make for future plans. I think that is unfortunate because he apparently did make some plans to move forward, and there was perhaps not a complete understanding of the full process that would need to be undertaken to receive all approvals and to have all pieces in place before the lot that he intended to build on could become a true buildable lot. So although it's unfortunate, it's, it's the reality, to me, is that it's not a buildable lot, there is not the required 200 feet of frontage, and so I think that the, the decision in the March 4th, 2015 letter to not approve is, is appropriate.
I agree, and I think, in addition, just, I think procedurally, a lot of the other standard deadlines and the process of going through this has been not proper most of the time, and I think that that's unfortunate, too, just in how, you know, we have, we have standards in town of how things are to be completed. I, I think for me also, the comments of the neighbors holds particular weight, so I would agree.
Yeah, I, I do as well, and, you know, we have to rely on staff and, and counsel who really laid out a plan that, that unfortunately, Mr. Martin didn't, didn't follow, and relied on someone on the staff that, that seemed to indicate that, that if a road was built, he would have an option of, of having a buildable lot, but so far, there is no road. So I could not go along with his submissions.
And I think that's the, the crux of it is, without the road, it's, it's a moot point without 200 feet of frontage.
Right.
Yeah, I'm definitely sympathetic with the applicant's being led to believe what he did believe, but I can't see under the circumstances overturning Mr. Glidden's decision, given the circumstances.
Yeah. You know, I, I think there's an, you know, an applicant or somebody wishing to do something like this, there's, there's an obligation on their part to fully understand all that has to be done, and to rely solely on, on an individual, and to interpret that individual's feedback to the applicant. You know, it, I don't think that they carried the, the research far enough, perhaps, to really fully understand all that had to be done.
Correct.
And I agree with you, Katie, that in addition to that fact that there's not the 200 feet, I mean, we also need to consider the fact of the impact of, of this plan would have on the, on abutting properties and so on, and, I mean, it's, that's an additional issue here, but the easiest thing to kind of come down on in terms of, from my perspective, how I would see the, the appeal here would be the, the lack of frontage.
Yeah, you know, I go back to the 2011 letter from Mr. Beach, and, you know, point, I mean, there's a lot in the record. I'm just gonna point one thing out. He makes clear that the new lot must have the required 200 feet of frontage on a quote-approved road.
Right.
Lawyers and judges can argue about what approved road means. I think we've heard from tonight in terms of what that means.
Yep.
An approved road is one that's been designed in accordance with the standards set forth in the zoning regulations, one that's been dedicated to the town. There has to be some more formal action proposed deed. There has to be a process whereby it goes through the planning commission. To the extent that there's the impact of wetlands, perhaps that's even a factor as well, and an approved road is, is also one that is accepted by the board of selectmen. That, in my judgment, hasn't happened here. There's a lot of talk about what Howard said or didn't say, or, I can't really give too much weight to that. Again, as I said at the outset, we don't have rules of evidence here, but we can, so it's in the record, but I can't really credit, you know, statements about what someone did or didn't say.
Well, and we have his letter spelling out very clearly what needs to happen, so we do have that. It's not like we have nothing from Howard. We do, we have some...
We can, we can rely on that.
Yep.
And even still, Howard wouldn't have had the authority to just approve it like, like counsel had told us.
Yeah, and it's not like there's a signature block on, on this, on the sheet, on this map, 3976, where, where it says, "I hereby certify as the ZEO of the town of Simsbury this approved building lot." I mean, it's, it's initials. I don't know what that means.
Right.
I don't know what that means.
Right.
I guess we're left here to speculate as to what that means. There's, to my knowledge, there's nothing in the record to know what, what those initials are. So I am, I'm gonna vote to not in favor of the motion and to uphold the decision of the ZEO. Before we vote, I do just have a procedural question for the town attorney. Do we need a collective statement of the reasons for our action, or do we just rely on the record?
I, I think you've all stated reasons, but if you could perhaps say that you're voting the way you are for the following reasons.
Okay.
Just to make it crystal clear in the records.
So should we, to, to, so the motion on the table is in the affirmative. Should we, should we vote on that, and if there is a, if that motion fails, should then we have a second motion as to the reasons for the failure? I just...
No, I would, I would suggest that you say, "I'm voting against the motion for the following reasons."
Okay.
Just, you've all said it, but just, when you vote, just, and I think the record adequately expresses reasons, but, you know, there are those cases that say that you have to list the reasons that you're taking the action you are.
So I would suggest that then, those voting against the motion, the basis for that no vote would be for the reasons set forth in the March 4th, 2015 letter from Mr. Glidden and Mr. Martin, including the failure to have an approved public road with adequate frontage on the, on the parcel B, failure to seek and obtain wetlands permits, and failure to submit sufficient information to address site development details. That would, I believe, would be the collective reasons for a no vote on the motion. Does anybody have any objection to that statement, hearing none?
I would, I would, though, just add to that, that we also have heard in person and in, and in written form, feedback from abutting neighbors in terms of their opinion of this, and I think that weighs into this as well.
Okay. Any objection to adding that to the collective statement for those voting against the motion?
No.
There's, there is none. Okay. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Again, a, a yes vote is to sustain the appeal and overturn the ZEO. A no vote is to affirm what the ZEO has said. So all those in favor, say aye. Those...
I think when you vote yes, the way the motion was stated, you're voting to overturn the ZEO's decision. That's what I heard.
As a yes.
If you vote yes, you're voting to overturn the zoning...
Right.
Right, that's correct.
Yes, I probably just heard. No vote is to sustain.
Right.
Correct.
Well, I said to sustain the appeal.
Okay.
And overturn the decision.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's, a yes vote is a vote...
Right.
In favor of the appeal.
Right.
And a no vote is in support of the ZEO's decision.
But are we all agreeing to the reasons that we, that we are voting the way that we're voting, so assuming that we're voting against this, are we all agreeing to all of those reasons that you just stated, including adding the neighbors thing?
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah.
Do you have a problem with that?
Well, yeah, I would just not, I would not include the neighbors one. I would also say that I'm mainly doing it because of just the frontage aspect, because I'm not qualified to judge the wetlands, the ones, since we haven't heard any evidence as it relates to that, we didn't really discuss it, and I don't even think it's necessary under the circumstances, because Mr. Glidden's decision is justifiable under just the frontage issue alone. So that, that's my reason.
Okay.
Okay.
But my, my only thought on that, Paul, is that, assuming this does get appealed to the Superior Court, the judge generally looks at only those reasons that we put on the record. So if we give six reasons for why we have upheld the ZEO, the parties have to go through those six and argue them. If we only give one reason, that's the only thing that goes up to the Superior Court.
Well, but you are voting for those reasons, but I don't personally want to vote for those particular, for those particular reasons. those particular, for those particular reasons. So collectively, they would have to consider it, since some of the members were voting that way for some of those reasons. Isn't that the case?
No.
No? We all have to vote for the exact same reasons?
There should be a collective statement as, or not. And if we don't have a collective reasoning, then what the court will generally do is go search the record, and basically do their own search, and the lawyers will argue about it. So if we don't have a, if we aren't all of a, you know, if we all have our own reasons, and we don't want to have a collective statement, then I believe, you know, that will be something that will be dealt with on appeal.
Yeah, I think it's fine, whatever we would say. I agree with reasons one, two, three, but not three and four. As long as that's clear in the record.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Yeah, then I would, I would like to hold that position. Okay.
Is that the same for you?
Mm-hmm, it's the same for me.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, so then what I suggest we do is, let's bifurcate this. Let's, let's, let's take a vote on the motion, and then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll, I don't, give me some...
We've all, we've all stated, as the counsel already said...
All right, all right, so, all right, so for the record, for the, for the record, Chairman Hogan and Chairman Kochi are the two individuals who did not wish to go along with all those others. The other four members are in agreement with all the various issues that were read into the record.
I think the clerks may do it, chairman's each member, state their vote, state their reasons.
Okay. All right, so let's do a roll call. So what I'm gonna ask each member to do is state their vote, and in the event that they're voting no, to state what their reasons are. Okay, so Ms. Hogan.
So I'm voting no, for the reason of the lack of 200 feet of frontage.
Okay. Mr. McCormick.
So, yeah, I'm voting, I vote no for, for the reason of lack of frontage, and, and I, because I believe that the other items that the, I articulated in the March 4th letter should also be considered, as well as the feedback that we received from other interested parties.
Okay. Ms. Martin.
I'm voting no for the same reasons as Mr. McCormick.
Okay, the chair votes no for the same reasons as Mr. McCormick. Mr. Horn.
I vote no for, again, the same reasons as the chair.
Okay. Mr. Kochi.
And I vote no for the reasons of frontage only.
Okay, very well. So just for the record, that's a unanimous zero to six vote, the motion fails, the appeal fails, the decision of the ZEO is sustained, and in terms of reasons for decisions, I believe those have been adequately articulated and a record's been made. Is there anything further on this application? At this time, I believe this application is disposed of, and we will move on to the next matter on the agenda.
Thank you. This is your spot. We have a busy summer, but thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. That was...
Yeah. Unique, for sure. First, first one that I've, anyway, speaking of...
Yeah, yeah. We're done. We're done on that. So I have misplaced my agenda. Here it is.
Other matters?
Other matters, are there any other matters, as may properly before, come before the commission? I moved the rules to the next meeting, just because I knew we'd have a long night. Are there any other? No? Okay. Approval of minutes of February 25, 2015. Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve.
There's a motion?
I will second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any corrections?
Thank you.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Anything before we adjourn? Okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good job, Greg.